It is four o'clock and I am opening this regular meeting of the solid way special service to the street number one. It is Wednesday, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Present are myself, Mary McGann, Chair, Diane Ackerman, Mike Dunaway, Jessica Thacker, Chris Scovall, Lily Hooton, and Mike Kinnerly. Oh, and Colin Topper.
Hi, Nick.
First order of business is citizens input. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
I checked the email. We're coming in and didn't see anything.
At this point, there are no citizens to be heard. Our first action item is the approval of the minutes from July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented in the packet for July seventeen, twenty twenty four.
A motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
You can second that.
Seconded by Colin. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, we are to the action item review and approve of the July twenty twenty four financials.
Yeah, so July's expenses were consistent with June's. We did make a payment to the PTIF fund. And payroll expenditures are trending down, and I think this has to do with the reduction in hours that we're seeing at the landfills. So payroll expenses were under two hundred thousand dollars, which is about twenty five hundred dollars less than normal. So not a huge change, but some. One addition would be that the first payroll did include the Independence Day holiday. Let's see. And then the second payroll overtime hours were down by about thirty hours. So that is always helpful to see. One thing I found interesting looking into the holidays, holidays were reduced this year to help with the budget. But what really gets us would be the holidays worked for the garbage collection staff that we don't have them take the day off. Looking at it, it's about thirty five hundred dollars per holiday that we have that they work. I think it would be a worthwhile conversation to look at discussing with them if they want holidays off. You know, they only currently have Christmas Day and New Year's Day as the only holidays that we do not collect garbage on. I mentioned this to Ron Bogart, who's our, excuse me, our dispatch manager today, and he said from his experience, the collection staff want to work. They don't want to take the holidays off because it just pushes it out and then they have to work more the following weekend. But, you know, it's just something I'm considering, at least on a singular.
They don't take Thanksgiving Day off?
Not anymore. It's just Christmas Day and New Year's.
Well, Thanksgiving seems like it would be appropriate.
It was, it was a decision by the drivers.
The drivers. Well, then let's honor it.
Yeah.
It's just, it's too much because trash doesn't stop, so there isn't, you can't take a day off. All you do is get to move.
We just have to work harder the next day.
Well, no, it just gets moved to another day off. So if they take a Wednesday off, they all work Saturday.
Yep. It is not, I don't want to say normal, not average to only take those two days off. But it really does, operationally, it's smoother because you don't have an extra day's trash sitting out. And you just, you don't get a day off like Chris said. Something to think about. To consider.
Yeah, I just found that interesting. Operations expenses were a hundred and thirty seven thousand eight hundred fifty six dollars and seventeen cents, which is consistent with June. Let's see, fuel expenses are about six thousand dollars higher. Again, I think it's just when we're billed in the month, which month it falls into. Vehicle repairs and maintenance was down quite a lot compared to June. June was a big month for that. But facility repair and maintenance increased. We had to fix the scale at Klondike. There was twelve thousand five hundred dollars for scale repair. Let's see, we sent out the mailer for the hour changes and glass not being allowed in single stream recycling, so that was twenty five hundred dollars. We still had the roll-off rental of eighty seven hundred dollars. And then we spent twenty one thousand dollars for a Conex box for the Klondike landfill so that they'd have a new, is it appropriate to call it a shed, like a new spot to go? So those were the larger expenses totaling to four hundred eighty three thousand dollars or four hundred eighty three thousand two hundred forty seven dollars and forty three cents.
Just a slight correction on that. That wasn't necessarily a scale repair.
Oh.
That's a scale upgrade that we're going to be doing in the future. We were just buying, we had to prepay for the parts operated.
Oh, thank you.
And that's part of the, the new scale house slash office slash trailer. We, we had to upgrade the scale to fit. They don't, they don't make those parts anymore, so.
Yeah, and it all ties into the asking of the county for extra TRT money. This is all to upgrade that.
That was a big, that's probably how you thought it.
Exactly. I was gonna mention that later, but yeah, it was part of the, it was what we promised the county we would pay, we would buy.
And the comics was twenty one thousand bucks? Is that just as kind of just a shipment thing?
It was, it had improvements on it.
It's an office heating, air conditioning.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that was part of the scale is they after, when they retrofit the new user interface, the scale will have to, they had to upgrade because they don't make the parts anymore. And that's kind of where the twelve thousand comes in is soon as you touch anything old, you have to.
Yeah.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to that we approve the expenditure for the month of July twenty twenty.
Also. In the amount, in the amount of four hundred and eighty three dollars.
Yep, in the amount of four hundred and eighty three thousand two hundred and forty seven and forty three cents.
Okay, motion by Colin.
I'll second.
By Mike. Any discussion, any further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We are to, reports from the board and staff. We will begin with Mike.
Well, considering the heat and the seriousness of the truck issues, still having just the one roll-off. It was a remarkably quiet month in some ways. No glass in the single string is catching on. All the carts have decals on. Our soft opening, as you could say, is coming to a close. So we're gonna be talking to the commercial accounts that are still putting the glass out and remind them. And then next month, we'll do the same with residential, start to enforce the rules. The, I believe, two meetings ago, the board approved spending up to seventy five thousand dollars on a replacement roll-off. Turned into a bit of a nightmare as far as paperwork. But as of, just yesterday, it finally got done. It took over three weeks. Banks have trouble understanding what we do, that we're a government entity. That's all I can figure out. Which really amazes me considering we were able to raise, you know, thirteen and a half million dollar bond, couldn't get fifty thousand dollars financed. Our, our own bank, we had, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank and they would not finance fifty thousand dollars without a cosigner. I, I can't, it's a different time, but it's finally over. For that same amount, we went ahead and got a semi. So we're upgrading a roll-off and a semi. And they're at the hydraulics place now being fitted and we hope to have them both on the road. I, I made the call to finance these. So for a little, for right around seventeen hundred and fifty dollars a month for thirty six months, we're upgrading. It's, it's kind of kicking the can down the road by being used, but we are upgrading greatly. We're going from over a million miles on the semi, which the timing couldn't be better. That semi has developed a huge, a gusher of an oil leak. And if you hear a taxi plane tonight and a single bullet, that'll be it being buried out back. It's definitely headed to death row.
How many miles?
It, it has a little over a million miles on it.
How do you even keep track of that many miles? I don't know.
I mean, that, that, that's, I don't want to say common, but if they're rebuilt at five hundred thousand dollars, the ones that really go over the road, for local, that, that's, that's a lot. And especially going in and out of the landfill, the environment and carrying trash. But old blues sitting out here, it, it's, it's about dead.
When did you think that you said they would be on the road or be here on what day?
We're hoping three to four weeks tops. The, the semi will be a much easier retrofit. The, the roll-off, they've actually got to put the whole system on and, and plummet. That one's gonna take a little longer. So we're hoping to get the semi before we get the roll-off. They've quoted as three to four weeks.
For the roll-off?
No, for, for both basically, but they, they're assuming they can get the other one sooner.
What year, what year is the semi? And what, is it a P?
One of them is a twenty thirteen and one of them's a twenty fifteen. I don't have the details. I want to say they're freight liners.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the mechanics definitely, Ann Levi, wanted a Peterbilt, but we, we couldn't find the appropriate transmission in the appropriate price range. So we did get something that the mechanics feel they're the most comfortable to work on, that they, that we could come up with. The financing, I want to emphasize that because it's not gonna have a huge impact on our cash flow. Not, I mean, obviously it's gonna cost us something, but I was reluctant to put us into deeper or to put a lot down. Because cash flow is gonna need extra attention in the coming months because we're taking over the city contract. We're not gonna be getting that hundred and eight thousand dollar check, you know, on the fourth of every month. That money's gonna roll in over a period of time. So it's gonna be an adjustment. We're planning on not making a payment to the PTIF unless it seems possible, which at this point, it more than likely won't be, at least not on time. We'll have to see how it goes after a month or two and see where we're at. So take that into account, but we are full speed ahead on taking over the billing. Grand County, the remediation of the shooting range, I haven't got any response from the county attorney. That's all I'm gonna say at this time. I'm not sure if Lily's gonna mention it, AMCS, but I'm going to mention it briefly. The saga continues. We are back in the system and using it and we will be at least partially billing out of it come September before August. Not fully, but partially. AMCS, if you recall, had us stop using the system. They wanted us completely out of it so they could do some resets. And that turned into basically three months. And in addition, we've received an invoice from AMCS for seventy five thousand dollars.
What are you saying, Doc?
I responded in, you know, we don't even have a working product now. It wouldn't make much sense to pay this invoice at this point. And I haven't received any reply from them.
Yeah, energy. Just one of the problems with these invoices, this invoice is it's for their hours of, their billable hours working on the software. The problem is it, it's only billed through December of twenty twenty three. That's where this invoice brings it. So it doesn't even bring us into the current year. To date, we paid a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars to AMCS. Fifty thousand dollars was for a yearly subscription, which lapses September of twenty twenty four, so that will be an interesting conversation. But that leaves we paid seventy eight thousand dollars so far to getting the software to work. And now we have another seventy six thousand dollar bill. It still does not fully work and it's only through December of twenty twenty three.
Cool.
We need to have a lawyer involved in this?
Well, that was my next sentence. I, I sent him the fifty page contract on Wednesday, no, today's Wednesday, so it would have been Monday afternoon. So he's reviewing that as we speak, in case.
Your lawyer through the trust?
Ah, yes. The, well, the one we.
It's a private firm.
The one we, the one we use out of Salt Lake City. Rarely we try not to because it's an additional expense, but Benson, can't remember his last name, but it's the one we've been using since before I was here.
From this Kurt and the Conkey out of Salt Lake City.
I always wondered how we ended up with them, but I don't know the backstory.
I think they were brought on when the acquisition started.
They were, they were probably, so should do. It's outside of the trust.
Interesting. But in case this goes to litigation, he's, he's getting some background on it as we speak. Other than that, I don't want to say anything else in a public meeting at this time. We, we may have discussions in executive session next month, depending on what develops. Expenses, we did replace, we bought a small scale for the CRC so that we could continue to weigh e-waste and whatnot. That was four hundred dollars. The old one died and it just wasn't worth repairing. The bulldozer at the Moab landfill, for the last week and a half, it seems to be functioning. The AC quit working again today, or actually yesterday, but it, it's the first time it hasn't overheated since before I got here. The final bill isn't in yet, but it could be over fifteen thousand dollars. Just yesterday, we received a bill for thirteen and a half for repair on the old loader. We're gonna be selling this in order to help pay for the lease on the new loader that, that Chris has been working on with, with Wheeler.
Where, where are you putting it on the state side?
I have to check up, up at Moab. Oh, actually, I was gonna cover that a little bit.
We mentioned the new, what I'm calling the new scale house for Klondike. Actually, it should have been delivered today, but the truck broke down. This was an item that we promised Grand County we would purchase to upgrade the facility. They'll have a place they can get out of the heat and eat their lunch without dust blowing other than the equipment. There will be another at least fifteen thousand dollars on scale updates and site adjustments. Just letting you know some of the, the big expenses that we're facing. The new carts came in, so for the first time since I've been here, we have new sixty five, new ninety fives and new recycling, new blue recycling carts that we can offer all customers. The city did agree to pay for about a third of this bill in order to continue to offer sixty five gallons as an option. So it's good we got some of the equipment. We need to do what we're supposed to. That is all I have unless you have any questions.
Any word, and I should maybe know this, but with the city with their glass collection locations?
I've heard nothing. I have not asked for anything, but I have heard nothing.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Chris?
Go briefly over each facility. We've kind of, we've been working with the engineers HDR. They kind of have an input on, at each facility because we're, because of the work we're doing there. Out at Klondike, as you guys know, this has been kind of an ongoing thing. We're trying to expand our permitted area to place trash. We recently delayed kind of implementing that. There's, there was some complications in basically their, their numbers and the, and the reality of what, what's going on out there. I think we'll still be on track. Probably hopefully at the end of this season, we've been able to make some adjustments onsite to buy us some more time. I think this, this has kind of been an ongoing process and what we would call cell free. I think I've been making adjustments and buying this time for about two years now. But I, I think I got us another year. Overall, it's looking pretty good out there. It's just, I guess, some of the confusion is coming because I'm trying to do something that isn't necessarily standard operating procedures when it comes to landfills. Most landfills have set boundaries because they are required to have an engineered liner. And I'm worried where we are, we actually get an exemption from the engineered liners and we use natural liners. Because our liner's natural, I'm trying to facilitate, and there's been different terms used, whether it's a free form cell or a super cell, basically to get permitted to just finish out the life of the forty acres of the current permitted landfill that we have. That way we don't have to go back and keep trying to permit a new cell. I've got, everyone kind of buys off on it. It's just been a hard process because this isn't something that's kind of written stone and it's just an easy thing. And okay, then Moab landfill. We have our permit renewal. Right now, we're waiting to get information from Red Desert Survey. We put off in the, in January, we did a survey at Klondike and give that, go give that to the engineers to calculate airspace utilization rates. We're doing the same thing. We kind of put it off with Moab landfill as far as we can to tie it into when we start this permit renewal. Our permit renewal for Moab landfills next year, probably need to update some of the new board members on what's going on up there with what I labeled item one back in January. But we'll be getting some more information from the survey and kind of an updated end of life timeframe from Moab landfill. Transfer station operations plan, there's a discussion and action item on it. I won't go over too much over that other than the fact that the operations plan that I sent out was actually not fully the updated one. There was a paragraph that was added and then I also didn't send out the, the big one. I don't know if you guys, if you have any need to go through the appendix, I have the appendix one and I can send those out to you. So I just kind of sent it the actual transfer station plan. Just a quick thing on the scale at the CRC. So in the state of Utah, if you're gonna run commodity over a scale, it goes through the Department of Agriculture's weights and scales. It got shut down and, or it broke down and we actually got inspected and they gave us a violation on it. We're still waiting and according to the, the website, the scale that Mike brought, it says that it's good, but we're not sure whether it's good or not. So I'm still waiting whether they're gonna pass that off or not. What we've had to do, because that, that only works for our, like our universal waste and, and stuff, but as far as our big commodity trailers, that's, that was the other use of our scale that broke down. So what we're doing is we're loading trucks and we have to run them out to La Grande and run them over their scale. I did talk to the representative at the US Department of Agriculture and they said that that would be okay. They print a scale ticket out there and they're pretty good about getting me those scale tickets to show that we're, our, our weights are certified. So the nine sixty two, this has been an ongoing thing with our equipment up at Moab landfill. It's newer equipment, but without the replacement of a heavy equipment mechanic, we've relied on Wheeler to repair our equipment. They are both out of warranty and unfortunately, this, this year, they've, they've been quite troublesome. Given kind of the, the potential limited lifespan of Moab, I don't see it very beneficial for the district to try to invest in any major equipment improvement at Moab landfill. So we're kind of stuck with what we got. So kind of what my thinking is, so, and even at one point in this way, so we have a rental loader up there at Moab landfill. What had happened is our loader and our dozer basically died at the same time, so we had no equipment to run up there to manage any of the waste. Kind of what I'm trying to put together with this nine sixty two and it's, it's parked out here in, in the lot is we're gonna, since it's older, it, it's a bigger machine. It's still got some equity left. We're trying to sell out our equity and then use the equity to lease a machine that would last, last a lifetime at the Moab landfill. We're still kind of in the works and, and we haven't even really got paperwork on the cost of, of the rental so far. As soon as we start getting numbers, I'll, I'll update the board online. And that's all I got. Oh, just one, one other thing too with the glass being out. I've noticed our weights are down tremendously, which to me, I, I just goes against everything that I, I've done because you don't send a truck that light out on the, out on the highway, but I mean, it's full. There's a, there's a physical representation of the glass. There's a lot of glass coming out of, out of the thing. I did see. The, they still are charging us a contamination fee. I mean, I think there's deserves a conversation there because without that, I, I do audits on our single stream every once in a while and it's pretty clean. So I'm not sure what they, what they expect up there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't buy the audit. We just got the invoice for last month and I don't buy. They, they weren't showing a significant decrease in glass and I, I don't buy that. So I was gonna give it one more and see what the next one is and then send up a red flag saying this isn't, this isn't right, something wrong.
Yeah.
So do we have tonnages on, so it's our tonnage against their tonnage?
The, the overall tonnage i- isn't the issue. It's the, the breakup of what's in it. They're still showing glass to be twenty plus percent.
But my question still remains, if, if somebody says one thing, them, and we say another thing, do we have to have a lawyer to interpret it?
I think it's rough because it's, it's the, it's the material makeup of what's in the truck. So they're not, they're not debating the weight of the truck. They're debating what's, what's in, in the, in the truck. And I think, to be honest with you, it's, it's a, it's a massive smurf. They run a lot of different people in there. We probably just got templated, you know, oh, here's solid waste. Here's what they have been. We probably do need to kind of shake it up a little bit and, and have them re, relook at what are, what materials are contained in our loads that are going up. What materials are contained in our loads that are going up there.
They might not even be looking, rather, they're just assuming it's still contaminated.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, they claim to do it and find, you know, like a random check of a percentage. Uh, like I said, I'm not buying it, but we'll give it one more and then we'll.
Do we know where our glass is going? If it's not going in there, do we know where it's going?
Um, we. So i- i- if it increases, it should be going in, it's coming to us, it could be going through the uh recycle center. Um, we've kind of the timing of when the glass was taken out, um, it takes us a while to load up commodity trailer at the CRC. So that that's was kind of a mixed thing, so, but this next truck, I just checked it this morning and there was no glass on it. So I can uh uh compare those to pass loads to see if our uh in volume of glass increases.
Cause see to me, still, you you you're gonna need some kind of documentation when you go to these people and say, look, we we see this here and this here. Which doesn't make sense that it's here and there in our.
And 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 that'll come from, we'll be able to document this this most. This was just kind of an initial thing. And it was just something that I noticed and it was kind of a red flag for me because we sent a truck out for fifty-five thousand. Pounds on the road and to me, that's how you lose money. If you don't put your truck up next to the wave while you're running up across off the stage, so I just grabbed this as as. A red flag just because I noticed the way this is just kind of, the process is just starting and I'll I'll definitely follow it and be able to follow the CRC to kind of see the. The difference in in rates versus the volumes that increase at the CRC.
And if I mean, on the invoice, the tonnages going up. Have decreased also, so they're not saying we're still having the same weight when we add glass. It's just still the contamination percentage has remained the same.
I don't know if this is part of it, does the city, do you have, do you feel that the city is gonna request a um? Drop off for the public in certain areas in town? They can do three.
That was, that was the agreement, yeah.
So but there hasn't been no discussion at this point that you're aware of, that there.
Not that I, but I'll I'll follow, follow up on that. That that would be my first time following.
Great, um, any, anything else? Any questions for Chris? Lily?
Um, well, I thought we could pivot in the. Yeah, uh, who is um one of the applicants to be on the board? And I prepared some questions. Where we'd like to ask them, yeah.
Thank you for your interest. Thank you very much. So we have five plus questions. And the first one being, why do you want to serve on Solid Waste's book?
I want to serve because. In my company, we do a lot of disposal and there's a lot of things that I don't understand and I question. And I think the best way to get the knowledge is just be involved and learn it. That's why I wanna serve, and plus I want to serve in our community and I think this is a perfect opportunity.
Learn and serve. Any questions or any follow-up questions on that? What two qua- what two qualities do you have that will make you a good board member?
I am open-minded and I like to learn new things and. I'm a lifelong resident in Moab and I have, I feel Moab. At at my interest, my best interest, so.
How long has your company been in business?
Just, oh, like over thirty years.
Actually, do you have any other board experience?
Yeah, I served on the Grand County Transportation Special Service District. For a lot of years. My term just expired uh the end of December and I just didn't renew it. I was the chair there for. I don't know, it feels like a long time, maybe four years or, I was there for quite a while. That sounds about right. I think I was pregnant with my last son. About then, yeah, and he's seven, so I. I wasn't, I didn't start on the board, I started as a secretary, they call it, but I think. They probably named it something different where you take all the minutes. And then a board, uh, an opening opened and I was like, I think I wanna be on the board now. So then I served on the board, so.
Did you uh have good memories of serving on that board?
Yeah, I I liked it. It's um, it's nice to go and understand how mineral lease money works, at least at that place, and I think you guys get mineral lease money too. It's, it's nice to understand there's way more than what you see that goes into this, so. Yeah, I I liked it, it was fun. Good learning experience, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
What are your thoughts about recycling in our isolated community?
I think I need to learn a lot more about it. Uh, just hearing your guys' discussions, I do think it's important. But I don't have a lot of knowledge about it. I know that, you know, it needs to be separated and. It takes more effort that way, and then I hear you talking about poundage and which would make sense if you're hauling it off, so. I think it's important. I do feel it's very important. How to move forward and implement it and have people do it, I don't know.
So you don't recycle at home?
Um, I don't consistently recycle at home.
And how old are your children?
Um, I have an eighteen-year-old, sixteen, ten, seven.
Well, I ask, I ask because we're, there was nothing in the elementary school around here about a year ago and and so now now we have something. Down there to start the children learning about it.
Okay.
But then there there, I learned that there's still, that there's something in the middle school.
Okay.
And something in the high school, so your children are exposed to it in some manner. Um, but anyway, I would encourage you. If if you even don't get on the board, to look into that.
Yeah, I'll have to ask them about that. I don't know that.
Ask them what they've learned at school about recycling.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will, thank you. I didn't even know they were doing that at the school.
Yeah, there's an ecology club, I think, in the middle school and then in the high school. I don't really know what they do in the other two. I'm I'm involved in the elementary school one.
Okay.
So it's it's consistent through school and I don't even know what it's about, but.
Good.
It's there.
I'll ask him.
I have not heard of one at the high school, like in a club or anything.
Yeah, I don't know. I only focused on one, because there was nothing at the elementary state at the time.
Shame, because we had it for a long time, didn't we, when you were.
At the elementary school.
Oh, we, oh, the whole time I worked there.
Yeah.
We had it, we had the, it's one thing we used with the kids that were in uh. The um, severely handicapped to teach them skills. They helped with it.
And that's why it was easy to start it back up because they had all the bands. And so it's pretty easy to start it back up.
Okay, so. Hold on, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I I also feel recycling is more than just. Our water bottles and products. You know, my company's in construction. Recycling is more than just those products. We recycle when we can and we have the means to recycle asphalt. You guys might understand this a little more. You can grind up asphalt and reuse it and it's a great product. Um, you can grind up concrete. It's, I mean, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of money, but so does recycling too, when you get down to it, but. I also feel there are, there are other areas that you can recycle. It's not just commodities like our trash. That area I know a little more about than than this, but I'll definitely ask my kids, they're always educating me. Sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Oh, don't, don't worry, sorry, no. Solid waste is a long uh term industry that requires advanced planning and vision. Where do you see Moab and its waste management in twenty-five years?
Well, you know, if we continue recycling, that's gonna reduce the amount that you need to go in the landfill and cover and cap. Um, I don't know how full the landfill is, but. We're gonna have to keep looking for areas to put our waste. Um, even if you implement recycling or encourage people, there's still gonna be waste, so. Ah, I guess you have to look for land. I don't, that's really a complex question that I don't.
That's fine, I I would have a hard time answering that.
Yeah, and then is it like county-owned land, is it public, state, uh, anyway? I could kind of spur off on a couple of rabbit holes there, but that's, I guess, kind of what I would be looking at. That's a good question.
What is your experience making strategic organizational and financial decisions that affect the. trajectory of an organization?
Definitely future planning, um. And future understanding of what the goals are and understanding that sometimes goals. Take some time and you have to break them out into steps each year. And that goes for money also, you know, setting it aside and. Sometimes it doesn't always work out that way, because some things come up, but if you have a good goal and a good way to get there. You can strategically plan your way.
Good.
One thing that that real quick, I had an excellent con- conversation with that, actually, when she left, when she came and visited uh last time. As far as uh her understanding of like operations and the equipment and what it takes to to. Run a construction company, because in a sense that that was, that's what we do. So I even thought about it a little bit afterwards.
Thank you.
It's an important experience that we. That's part of what we do.
Okay, as a citizen of Grand County and a customer of Solid Waste. What do you see as Solid Waste's biggest challenge in meeting residential's needs?
I don't know for sure, but I'm going to guess a couple of challenges are um. Probably keeping employees. I see you ba- you base hire a lot, but then again, so do I, so. I think employees is a big challenge and also budgets. Prices aren't going down for the consumer. They're not going down for you guys. They just keep going and then keep going up and then the consumer fills it and then you guys fill it and it's just. Cost and money. So I think a challenge would be. Trying to figure out a good balance of. Keeping money in without raising prices. Ooh, that sounds like it can't happen, but I don't know, maybe it could. Takes a lot of brainstorming, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I just.
Yes.
Just some ideas, you know?
Just as, just as a follow-up. Diane is not going to renew and so she's gonna be leaving the board in January, so we're gonna have another.
Mary, oh, did you not see that email? There's um a mix-up, uh Diane's term is through uh. It's December of twenty twenty-five, so Diane will be with us one more year.
Oh.
I did not see that.
Okay, yeah, I had.
But that doesn't mean I didn't get it. I often miss, I mean, you missed email.
Yes.
I get so many, there's times, you know, that I. I might have put them in the folder with the other folder without opening that.
So there's only one vacancy at that time.
So never mind.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to the last one?
Yeah.
So actually, you stated that um, that human resources is as one of the biggest challenges, um. Which I think you're absolutely right about it. Is there anything that uh, you know, Harrison's has done to implement? To retain or to attract? Or any successes that Harrison's has had? Just how do you deal with the challenges of um? Employing and retaining?
But I got answers, but they're not gonna be good for you. I I think my my answers are more complex of how do I keep employees versus how do I not breach my equipment and. Cut down on your guys' um. Maintenance and repair cost. Cause it goes hand in hand.
Yeah.
It really does, so. Throw an operator in there that doesn't know what they're doing and. You're down a quarter million dollar machine. That's a lot of money. And our, right now, we don't, uh, on our property tax statement, we don't pay solid waste taxes and I would hate to see it on there. But we pay our trash fees and when they go up and it's like. Quarter million dollar piece of equipment, because that's really what they cost. Um, and you have an employee in there that doesn't care, is not experienced. Um. And it is so hard to hire, so I am, I'm not, I don't want you guys to think like, wow, cause. Nobody wants to say, I don't know how to drag your dozer. What do you mean? I know how. I know what I'm doing because I want the job and so. Anyway. It's a complex answer.
We're not a taxing body at this time. We could tax, but it would have to go to a uh public referendum, fifty-one percent. So, just FYI.
No, no, and I I understand, I mean. We all have trash that we create every single day, so it's. It's hard, it's hard.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one more person to interview and we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, um, I want to, to ask your part, um, Savannah, Mike and I met with. Um, Mercy and Sabrina from the treasurer's office yesterday. And Mercy's awesome. I don't know if you know this. Um, and she shared a lot of great ideas with how we can reduce our accounts receivable balances at Solid Waste. I was trying to pull the report, but. Oh goodness, um, we have a lot of accounts receivables, just accounts that get behind. And one of the ideas of her that I really liked is, we wait until a customer hasn't paid for two months before we contact them about canceling their service. So then they haven't, you know, two months they haven't paid, well, hold their can typically between sixty and ninety days if they still haven't paid, but then that's. For some accounts, a large amount of money that we're owed. And so Mercy was saying that she had um adjusted. City code that it's um thirty days after billing, they'll shut off people's water, you know, and so. I will, I'm planning on taking a lot of the things that she's implemented in the city and just ways to reduce that. Um, to bring these policies before the board at our September meeting, to hopefully have them approved in September. And take effect with the transition to billing for the city. We don't have this, you know, guaranteed lump sum check that we're getting. Right before the first payroll. You know, usually around the middle of the month, our bills are due on the fifteenth, we get a large influx of cash, but. You know, I'm just trying to plan ahead with cash flow and so I figured. Getting a ca- having people pay for the service we're providing is the best way, through that cash flow and having this. Take effect at the same time, I think it will be a great way to bridge that gap. Um, you know, obviously, it's, the city sounds like the city customers are very on with paying. Because they have been with the city. Uh, it's the county customers that are behind and I think Mercy said. It was a hard time, you know, implementing this, that they were, they had a lot of services that they shut off. But now it's four to five a month as opposed to ten times that. So I really see that as just. You know, a great path forward for us, so I will be bringing those um to the board. I was also thinking she brought up some other items such as requiring a deposit if a renter is, um, if the account isn't a renter's name. Uh, and also, um, you know, if an acc- if an account is closed for non-pay status, requiring a deposit. That would have to go on a fee schedule that would have to be publicly noticed, but I think it would be worthwhile um to do. And so I was thinking about having that. Be part of perhaps our December meeting. And if we're then looking at any fee increases for the county. Since the interlocal agreement with the city has a fee increase of, you know, a dollar a year for the next five years. If we're gonna do something similar with the county, um I wouldn't want that to take, I would just like them to be on the same schedule. So the city's free increase will start janitors, oh my goodness. September first of this year, so I wouldn't wanna think about that until September of next year, just for noticing customers. I think it'd be really confusing if we had a different calendar date for the county versus the city. Um but I would wanna get that from schedule of, you know, being able to charge a deposit before, before to consider before then.
And I know we don't have to hammer that right now, but you think that the deposit will be similar in the range of one month's cost of service.
Yeah, yeah, and something different, just things I've been thinking about. I was very excited.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other than that, um Mike, Nick and I met briefly about the budget. Um so there'll be more of that to come, probably starting in probably the October meeting and then Mike did a lot about AMCS. Uh we're still working out the kinks. Savannah has been working on the spreadsheet. And we just just found some discrepancies of, you know, people having two carts but only paying for one cart and so we've been buttoning that up. So it's been a really good process going through the city billing in more detail and getting that worked on.
So I have some questions. The cities we, city residents are required. To have garbage, but is county required? No. So if county, if county gets notification that they're. Uh haven't paid their bills for three months or something and we cut them off, that means that they're not gonna have, they're not gonna take it back up.
It could be, which is why I'd like to have that deposit to help cover us. Um a lot of residents that do have their carts pulled for non-pay do want them back. And will make payments.
And this is the county residents?
Yes, yes. Um it's been very, most of the people that have not wanted to pay the fee increases and are bringing their garbage to the transfer station. Are not the non-pay ones that I've experienced.
Are we going to be able to? Like, I think one reason the city, it became easier, they didn't have as many delinquents. Was they have that auto pay, they set up that auto pay, you know, it's automatically paid every month.
We'll have a lot more flexibility with the new software as tedious as it has been to implement. Our current system does not support this and is doing us um. A huge disservice. One thing that came up this week is. You know, many businesses have employee housing and have multiple accounts at different locations. Let's say they have three sites for employee housing. They have three unique garbage accounts. We charge their credit card auto pay the same amount, thirty two dollars on the same day of the month. And I'm finding only one charge is making it to our bank account. That they're being flagged as duplicate charges, so only receiving thirty two dollars instead of ninety six dollars. Savannah said that this was an issue back in twenty twenty one and it was fixed. I don't know when this started again and I was on. The phone for about two hours today with the credit card processors, it's still not resolved. So um our new software would not have this happen and auto pay will be a much easier function. With the new soft, with AMCS. I mean, we are getting by in our current system, but it is taking all of my time and resources to, you know. Just the multiple billings that we're doing out of quick looks for the landfill and collections out of this one system and having it all united. Finally, it will be.
We probably said it a hundred times. Once the new system works, it's gonna be a huge savings. Of time, energy, effort. Uh we really believe that 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 that's a great example of that there's money out there that we're not getting. And we we can't run the right reports.
And the hardest part is we have the gateway that we use. These are terms I'm just learning too, cause credit card processing is very complex, it seems, that, you know, in our portal, Terra Trash that we use. It shows cleared. I look up these three transactions, same credit card, all show cleared. I go to the credit card processor and only one shows it's cleared. And it's just, yeah, it's been a lot of, oh, call the other guy. I mean, the, we will work this out and it it did used to work in our current system, so I'm not sure when it, you know, when this break happened. But that would not be a problem in AMCS and we would just have a parent account within their other service locations on it.
It'll, it'll be a learning curve taking over the city and there'll be hopefully not too many bumps. But uh. The plan still makes sense if we can just get it to a. That's September, partially in September to go to the city?
Uh so it will be taken, so we bill in arrears, so like, we'll be doing the billing for September, but that won't happen until October first. Which I think is Tuesday.
But the rate increase starts in September. And if we can get paid.
Yes.
We'd be doing great.
What's, what's the plan to have the city accounts into AMCS? Is what's logistics on that?
Savannah's been working on a spreadsheet that we received from the treasurer's office with the billing data. It was about twenty seven hundred. Lines that she was having. The city has different account numbers than we have. That was one. So she's having to manually enter that. That is complete. The plan was to get it to AMCS tomorrow. What I just found out at three fifty today is that nine hundred of those twenty seven hundred accounts do not have billing information attached to them. So I don't understand how that happened from the city. This will be something for tomorrow to figure out. So I don't know how the city are filling these nine hundred accounts.
They're probably automatic.
We should have some sort of contact on file. Yeah, so I thought I was like, oh yeah, we're going great, oh. She was just so focused on the account numbers because, you know, we thought the documents were complete. I didn't look at them, you know.
They had to manually go in and add the account so that they could know which account to attach the billing information to. So she's just been concentrating on those two columns and then. Lo and behold, we have some blanks way over here.
Anymore? Have any questions?
Jessica? Pretty quick. Um so I've been heavily focused on the website redesign, which is proving to be a little bit more labor and research intensive than I originally thought. Um I did print out examples of the pages that I have completed. Um so right now, sorry, this one's a little blurry, that's zoom out. This is our front page. This is it. There's nothing else. And I've tried to make it as simple and cohesive in its design where it's a one screenshot shot. Where everybody could just go. And then I've brought our facilities page and this is it. I'm trying to keep the endless doom scrolling that we have of our current website design. So basically, it's everything, a one stop shop of all of our information and a glance, what we are. Our locations, our hours and our pricing. We don't need anything else. I'm trying to make this as buttoned up as possible. And then made herself a fancy little board page. So this is, um I took this based off of the way that the city had designed their council agenda. And whatnot, so it has our makeup, our meetings, link to our YouTube. Um our approved budget packets, meeting minutes, resolutions. And um this is a new thing that I've added, is when people can actually enter in their own public comments and if they want to request agenda. Or items added to our agenda. So this is, everything that I've created, this has taken about a week. Um one, cause I'm a perfectionist and I like spacing and colors to be just so, but also there's um things like. Tags, links, um SEOs, which is basically inter- internet searchability. Um keywords, um so basically when you search anything that has to do with keywords such as Moab, trash, recycling. The solid waste authorities, special waste or solid waste special service district, it will all immediately make us the first searchable option. Rather than anything else, but that's a whole lot of background stuff and that's been taking me a while. And I need to get a picture from you Diane, so I can add you to it as well. You're the only one.
And then. Years old or something.
And at the same time, I also redesigned all of our fee schedules. Um if y'all remember what our current fee schedules are, they read like novels. And require the use of a magnifying glass. I have contacts in and I still can't read those things. So um I have designed them to be more refined, easier to understand and more in line with the new website's design. And I've also printed these out and they are all color coded by facility. And rather than having our pricing with no discernible lining. Um and a paragraph worth of footnotes. Um I have also condensed them, so this is the Moab landfill, so rather than that one being, I believe, three sheets, it is now condensed to one. Same with the CRC, it used to be two and now it's one and it's green. Pondy, that one was pretty simple to begin with. And then I have managed to, I tried my best to condense this one down. This one, I believe, was four pages long and it is now.
And what is that one?
This is the transfer station. This one's expanded a little bit since we moved the um household hazardous waste program over here. And we've kind of switched a couple of things around. There has been no changes from our previously adopted fee schedules. So these, there's no change in the legality of these, they just look different. So if anyone take a peek at those.
So this is the current rates that?
It's the current rates, the, it's just the design is different to make it more accessible to the person reading, reading it. Yeah, they, they took me a hot minute to condense everything down into a readable, digestible format.
They'll probably be more adjustable, like readable on the phones too, right?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing. It won't be just this black and white text where you're sitting there squinting trying to read it. You have. I'm going to actually somewhat redesign them on a mobile format. So they'll look like that in the um the website design, but when you look at it in a more mobile format, it's gonna be a lot. More simple. It's probably not gonna have all the footnotes in it, so like, I'll put a little thing on the bottom that says, if you wanna read the footnotes. Go over here and click on this. So just to make it as, like I said, as easy and user friendly as possible, cause right now our website is clunky. And it is terrible to deal with.
Really like a lot of things uh around here, like Band-Aids were put on, Band-Aids, we'll just add a page, we'll add a page, we'll put it over there.
And I still have to do old school coding and like HTML coding to make changes to our current website. I am by no means IT, so I'm pulling from like my MySpace days to do that. So that's all the changes that I made for the website and the fee schedules.
And these are just flat files like PDFs?
Yeah, that's it. Nothing crazy. Wow. And I've actually already uploaded those to our current website right now, so and I tried to catch them. But there's so many, there's I believe thirty six individual webpages on our current website.
What?
Oh my gosh. Yeah, they created a lot. Some of them are active, some of them aren't, but it doesn't tell you if they are or not, so. Yeah, some are locked. Why? But I hate that website.
This is awesome. And the more Jessica does it for his in-house, the less we have to post somebody else.
And see, next is the reused residency art or re- residency artists. For the transfer station and the Moab landfill at the beginning of August. And are hosting a series of workshops at the mark with the next workshop called Built a Roly-Poly, which is basically just a go- wo- wooden ball. It's just made up for reclaimed materials, wooden ball. Um and that's being held tomorrow and the closing reception of both artists and the screening of their arts will be held August twenty ninth. I believe at five or six o'clock, I couldn't find the hours. Jeremy Spalding of the Grand County School District have invited us back for this demonstrations with it being held on September twenty fifth. I've got two potential demonstrations. This one will be held at the high school. So it'll be for middle slash high school and it'll be for seventh through twelfth grader. The other one was a lot easier for me to plan for because children are much easier to entertain, the teenagers. And um so my first idea, and I haven't shared this with anybody yet. Is I was thinking about taking the idea from the RCU conference and if I can get the okay from the um city. Or from the school district and um. Inter-agency cooperation with fire department, I would like to do a live demonstration of the hazards of lithium battery fires.
That'll go overwhelm.
Fires, kids will love it. Um but I'm waiting on Jeremy to get back with me because. We could only do about one, maybe two demonstrations, so. I would have to, it would be a school wide and I know there's a lot of logistics and getting a bunch of children, a bunch of kids together at once. But it's just the science students, so it'll be a much smaller.
Oh yeah, science students.
So we'll, we'll see. I'm hoping that's the idea, but um the second one I have as a backup is. The effects of using gray water slash recycled water on plants. So um I know that's not exactly. It wouldn't get them that excited, but when I, I did a lot of research today and that was the only one that was. That worked well within the timeframe. Um didn't require like. A wealth of um equipment, an entire team. Some of them were upwards of two months of because to show like the biodegradableness of certain products and. I was like, he just emailed me Friday, so I have a very short window of items that I can demonstrate to kids, but if. I'm just out here saying that like, yeah, here's some plants. Maybe like, okay, cool, and just move along. But a lot of the ideas that I was looking for, um. I couldn't find anything that was super. Feasible for this timeframe and the age group. Because a lot of them, they, or the lot of ideas that are on the internet are more like um in-class. Projects over time or something like that, just or resources that I don't have access to. So that's the idea. I'm really hoping that he'll agree with that, so I would love to do a lithium battery demonstration. Cause I can get the lithium batteries for free.
I think we had two fires this month, I think, since I left here. Had more, more lithium, lithium battery fires this year than my entire tenure or so. Had to empty its trash out and leave it for the fire department this year.
That's a great, I mean, that makes especially a good idea. You guys could maybe prevent fires, get some students psyched about disposal science.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really hoping I can, I can get that idea, like really push for it. Sorry about them being excited about the idea. It's, it's getting the logistics of corraling kids.
At the conference, they're predicting a six hundred percent increase in fires. Oh wow, because of the lithium batteries and I don't know if we're at six hundred, but it's definitely.
It's on a quite a bit, so.
What, what are they proposing to, I mean, to mitigate that? Other than just education?
There is no mitigation right now. They're so intense.
Actually a pretty good business going on fire suppression on transfer stations.
Yeah, that was one of the, the presenters that was there, they designed fire suppression systems. Based on the need for lithium ion.
Oh, I don't think you think of training.
They're, they're. Kind of. They, they have them, but not necessarily for lithium batteries. That adds a whole. They've got infrared, we're twenty-four hour for facilities, you know, a lot bigger than ours, but. It, it's just amazing how much it's going through. Uh the volunteer fire department said, hey, get used to seeing. You know, electric cars on the side of the road, cause our trucks, it takes three times the amount of water. You know, it's out between here and the Colorado border. You know, we'll do our best, but it's gonna burn for a while. We'll empty the truck, but we won't be back for an hour and a half. I was like, wow. The lithium batteries and e-bikers are a huge issue for us. In fact, we're getting, we had a little bit of pushback from the only one trying to take them. We've had a couple of episodes, so just with ours and that doesn't include our fire, so we'll see this. We've had a couple of episodes, so just with ours and that doesn't include our fire, so let me see what it says. Is there, they're unstable for some reason.
But all lithium batteries are recyclable, is that correct? You're taking, you, you take them up at the household hazardous waste facility Viola you just mentioned.
Yes, yes, but, but the end, I'm talking.
Well, there's an awful lot on the internet about how it, it's growing. It's a very hot item.
Recycling on the internet too.
Yeah.
It isn't necessarily always the truth.
And, and it's not just in the United States.
It's gonna be.
It's just like social channels.
Yeah.
So, so now we're an overcoming issue that a lot of people are not quite sure how to handle. There you go. Um, so. Next, I will be redesigning these service tags, which are these guys right here. Um, for both the trash and the simple stream recycling carts. These are the old service tags and. Um, the purpose of these tags are to inform residential businesses when they use their cart incorrectly. Um, right now, these tags are not really effective in their design and they're also outdated. Um, cause these things are more like a door hanger. They're not gonna stay on. A, or especially in our lovely windiness that we have out here. Um, so we're going to be moving to the wire system where the guys can wire them on. But we'll be making two-toned, so one will be a color for the trash and one will be a color for the recycling and. Um, yeah, just kind of, this is another sort of like educational factor, you know, to let people know. When the cart's not being taken, why it's not being taken. So it's kind of like a um. A for shame education sort of way, when people feel shamed a little bit about doing something wrong, they tend to do a little better a lot quicker.
I think Jessica, Mercy brought up door hangers is another way they contact people in nonpay status that like they're about to be terminated. And we thought that that would be a good idea for the treasures.
Yeah, that would be.
Um, because they, no one answers their voicemail or texts their voicemail.
Yeah, that actually would be, I've seen, I've actually seen this before. Um, I believe uh, Dominion uses those.
She sent me this to these templates. I can forward it to you earlier.
Yeah, who are you? That's great. Um, and then just lastly, working on general administrative items such as data to create social media posting and any other testing necessary to perform.
Okay, Nick.
All right, thank you. Um. Working on reviewing the P and L, profit loss statements and the financials. Um, I was hoping to have. At least a broad brush presentation for this meeting, but it's gonna have to be next meeting. But I just wanted to go over. Uh, just some top level numbers, um, January through June. Revenue is, is in comparison, actual revenue to budget is currently about sixty K if I, so that's good. It's a good thing. Uh, there, there may be categories within the revenues that should roll off. You know, commercial and residential, they may be up or down, but overall revenues are trending. Better than budget. In conjunction with that, expenses are, are trending under budget, which is a good thing. Uh, currently it's, again, for the time period. January through June, we're about two hundred thousand under budget on expenses. So that's, that's a good thing. Um. Other income is, is, is um, better than budget mainly because of the um. Gain on the sale of the Thompson Springs property. Amorization, depreciation and interest are pretty much on budget. So uh, next meeting, I want to be able to show you. You'll, you'll be able to see the categories in comparison to actuals to budget, at least. Um, I would think through July, if not on uh, August for our September meeting. Now I'll continue to get with Lily and Chris on any capital items that we may need, uh, may want to. Put on the fixed asset register, such as you'd mentioned earlier in our meeting here, the uh, scale upgrades. That'd be a, a something we could move into the capital and into fixed assets. And then any other items that come across. I'm, I'm reviewing the, our insurance renewals. There's one vehicle on there I have a question about, but I'll get with Lily and Chris on that. Um, so. Yeah, right now, I think the, in terms of the financials, actually the budget, we're, we're on track. So hopefully that will continue through the remainder of the fiscal year. Anybody has any questions or?
I mean, I, I would say, thank you, Nick. Uh, we, these are reports are done on an accrual basis. Do you, and does everyone know, so accrual is like money we build for, not money we've necessarily received.
Right.
So I did pull the um, uh, accounts aging report and. Sorry, I didn't map on here. So we have about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars not collected yet that we built for. So just.
That's to date.
To date, as of today.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Within that number, there's probably amounts that need to be written off, um, and then sent to a collection agency.
That's for all time.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So over. Yeah, our current bill that was due, you know, the fifteenth of August is about ninety-four thousand dollars. Over thirty days past due is. Forty-seven, five, over sixty days. I'm surprised it's only like eight thousand and over ninety days is about.
That's good. That's good.
Thirty-eight, you said?
Yeah, so I'm wondering where.
That's a pretty low overnighting number. That's actually pretty good.
Yeah, I'm really surprised by that. I didn't have the city included in this, but we don't know them.
Yeah, they, they would handle any delinquencies on their end up until we take them over. So we'll, we'll get the real picture on.
It's like eighty-six.
Delinquencies.
A little bit different, but yeah.
Thank you, Nick. Anything else?
Uh, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Question, what, what's your fiscal year?
Yeah, so calendar year, which is different thing. What other government entities or sometimes July?
Counties on January, January.
The federal government does October to September.
And then city does June to June. Is that what I'm doing?
You guys can carry over funds, right? Fiscal year, fiscal year? Nope, it's over.
I bet like we have unspent.
The district, the district is uh, organized as a enterprise fund, which is essentially the same structure as a, a business. So it, it differs from a government entity where you have funds and, and whatnot, where. The, the solid waste district is, it's essentially just one big fund. And so we, we budget each year for expenses and revenues. Um, if, if we were trending to be over budget on expenses, then we would need to do a budget revision at, at some point. In the fiscal year, but right now, as is, as what happened last year, we, we were under budget expense wise. And so we did not have to do any budget revisions last year.
Your incomes were unrestricted. Like I know in the government, they have money.
Yeah, if your revenue is over your budgeting, that's not an issue. You don't have to figure out to spend money.
Oh yeah.
It's just the expenses. You can't, you're authorized to spend your budgeted amount. And if you. Are below that, you're fine. If you're above that, then you, we need to make sure we're tracking that and uh, do a revision before the fiscal year ends.
Okay, uh, we owe to uh, board reports. Does anybody on the board have anything to report?
I have a question. I'm just really confused about this replacing Diane Ackerman when her time is up. Um, in the past, uh, what, what guides the, the district to? Um, you know, what's the criteria? Because of the, if, if the city, if the town of Castle Valley. Is thinking and me with that, that, that we're gonna replace me when the time comes with somebody from Castle Valley. And that's the way it is. Or I hear this other thing that, well, we don't have to do that. We can just have anybody. You know, from, living anywhere in the county. And I just wanted clarity on that so that I can tell the town.
Well, we uh, we were going to change our bylaws to have it at both, then both of them at large. Because it took us like over, I mean, you could talk Pam happily. It took us forever to get anybody from uh. Castle Valley. It's just limited. It's harder for them to get here. It just. You know, it, Pam tried to quit for like four years, four or five years. She was on it for like twenty years and.
So wasn't she replaced?
And, and so that I'm just, you know, I'm already looking. And we are, we have mechanisms that we can do this with, so that I want to know, am I gonna be wasting my time? Or is the bylaws as what the bylaws are? And until we change them, it's gonna be that there's a Castle Valley represent.
Right now there is Castle Valley represent.
Okay.
It has. It'd be a waste of time if you found somebody, it would be a great board member.
It'd be great.
I'm working on it and, and I'm actually working with a woman. We need to start here, but, but maybe we can pick up here when we get, when we're done here.
Well, welcome, LJ. Yes, uh, just for public exposure, uh, I have known LJ for a long, long time and uh, we've worked together in other. Settings, the school setting. So we have a relationship outside of the district. So. It's the whole disclosure. Okay, why do you want to serve on the solid waste board?
Well, um. Lots of history, but uh, the, one of the main reasons is um. I have a passion for um, recycling. And that is one of the things that was a big thing for me when I first. Joined solid waste way back before we took over um, the collections and things like that. Um, I. Moved to Oregon when I first graduated from high school and they had a huge recycling program there. Uh, which is way different than it was in Maryland. And you know, I really enjoyed doing that. I thought my mom taught me how to do that. And it was a, a big part of, of, of something I, I, I've had so many people in my life tell me, oh, you don't need to recycle. It doesn't do any good and I still do it because it makes me feel good. So.
Anything else?
Um, well, I mean, you know, obviously the history. I know a lot about the people here. I know a lot about the district, the history. Um, and I would really have uh, it's. Future at, at, you know, really is close to my heart. I want to see it succeed. So.
Uh, what two, two qualities do you have that will make you a good board member?
One, I'm a good listener. Um, two. Uh. I like to do research. And so um, actually I was just listening on the news before we came. And I, I came and uh, I heard about, they are recycling pickleballs up in Salt Lake now. And so like the first thing I wanted to do was like, oh, how do they do that? So um, I'm constantly seeing things on, in the news or on Facebook and um, I've sent Jessica. Uh, little tidbits of things that I thought, you know, might be interesting for newsletters or. Things to, to get further information on. Is that a friend of mine said something about being a, something about, oh, I'm a master researcher. Yeah.
Wow. Uh, what are your thoughts about recycling in an isolated community?
I think there's a lot of growth that needs to happen. Um, and I think that it is also. A huge challenge, a huge challenge. But I feel that education is key in, in almost every aspect of our lives, not just in recycling, but getting uh. Getting the word out there, um, which is very difficult to do. Because most people don't use the normal avenues of, of news. And it oftentimes goes in, in one ear and out the other. So it's a, it's a huge challenge.
Uh, solid waste is a long-term industry that requires bad planning and vision. Uh, where do you see Moab and its solid, its waste management in ten, fifteen years?
Oh, oh, that's kind of, um. Having some inside information from being with the district for a while, um, I feel like that's an. Almost unfair question to anybody else, um, that would, you know, weigh hea- more heavily with me because I have the inside information. Um, but. I, I see that there are a lot of challenges that need to be overcome. Um, the. Obviously, Moab landfill, the condition of the vehicles. Um, changing enough to make it. So that it can stay afloat, um, but not, you know, uh, bring a huge. Fair uh, weight to the community as far as financially. Um. I think that there's a lot of potential. I've always thought there was a lot of potential. But it, it's not something that you can just fix with Band-Aids or. Fix immediately. It's not an overnight process.
What is your experience making strategic organizational and final, uh, financial decisions that affect the trajectory? Of an organization?
Um, well, um, my ex-husband and I had several businesses together. Um, that I helped build, um, from coffee cart to gear nuts. Um, even had a fireworks business at one point. Um. I, I've also served on several different boards. I served on the KZMU board. I served on the teen center board, which. I understand is no longer around. Um, I have worked. To provide funds, you know, through volunteer efforts. For not just KZMU or the teen center, but also I was a girl scout leader. Uh, organized the, I was the cookie mom. I knew where to get the thin mints all the time. Um. And uh, aside from that, I've had decades of experience of being a. Independent contractor, bookkeeper for a, a several different nonprofits, which include uh, lawyers, uh, well-drivers. Um, and um, product management.
Okay, and the final one, as a citizen of Grand County, a customer of solid waste, what do you see as solid waste? Biggest challenge in making residential needs?
I would say the biggest thing is dealing with um. Making the costs. Understandable to the public and educating them on not just how expensive. Uh, trash, trash collection can be, but also um. The. There's, it's, there's more to it than just trash collection or recycling collection. There's a lot more behind the scenes that. Uh, people just, they either don't want to know or they don't realize and.
Any follow-up questions, anything?
Good question. Um, so your uh, experience here in institutional knowledge, I could see being a real benefit. Um. But I could also see that there are some potential challenges with coming back into.
I'm not sure I understand. Is there something else I can help with?
I'm trying to explain.
And, and I don't know what happened. Why did it do that?
I'm not sure I understand. I didn't hear the end of your question.
I didn't get that. Uh, lost my train of thought a little bit, but so uh. So uh, do you, do you see any challenges in how uh, could you see overcoming those challenges of coming back into a different role? Uh, where somebody sits in your previous role and possibly does the job differently. Um, and, and just the organization itself changing. Uh, could, could you just talk a little bit about that?
Um, absolutely. And, and I thought a lot about that, that it, it might cause some issues. Um, my passion for the people here and for this uh, district. It, I think. I'm also, like I said, I'm a good listener, I I try and see from all sides. Um, I don't want to look at it from that aspect any longer. I don't want to look at it from the position that I had before, but I still want to see it succeed. And um and that was, that was something that was a concern of mine, um but not for my own self because I know who I am and how I can disassociate myself and look at things in a very methodical way and not um use too much emotion, I mean, obviously there's going to be something because I have a passion for for certain things, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, we'll let you know.
I'll have to run home and put it on so I can hear Diane, the rest of Diane's.
Hurry, I'm going to be done by the time you get home. You can get the recording.
Oh, with that in mind, we do, we cannot find a closed session to discuss who we're going to choose, which is very, very awkward, I hate it.
Oh, boy, that is.
You can't do that, you. Uh, so uh, so you, so um, but we probably should, is it on the thing to make a?
It's an action, it's an action item, did I?
Yeah, I did, I just forgot to look. So I do think we should talk about, we have two really good applicants, which is exciting. That does not happen very often. Uh, so does anybody have any strong feelings one way or another? Of of having, which uh either having Ashley or LJ. And I I want the staff to feel comfortable chiming in.
I think you have before you between LJ's previous knowledge and Ashley actually running a business across the street because that's why we're going to fail in the future is we're facing a private industry from a public standpoint and we're coming, so we're coming from a disadvantage. I think it might be us the the board to look at its bylaws and expand the amount of seats that sits on it that I might address. It might address uh Castle Valley. I know I did take Pam a long time and I think we replaced Pam with Stephanie who definitely wasn't even in Castle Valley. And I think if I know the 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 bylaws right, it's actually supposed to be someone on the board of the Castle Valley uh is supposed to sit, is supposed to sit here, so we've already adjusted uh rules and given the fact that um really our expansion from the original solid waste into the acquisition of Monument Waste was, if you look at it, uh is is questionable, so I think this goes within the realms of trying to do the best thing for their district and giving us the best opportunities moving forward for success because we have a lot going against us.
So what you're saying, then thank you for sharing, is that you think we should expand the board?
Obviously, you'd have to do it till seven.
Yeah.
So it would still be short.
And the reason for that, oh, we've wanted to do that for a while.
Uh, because I think you have before you two uh individuals that could uh contribute uh where I think the the board i- is lacking. I mean, a lot of the things going on, and no offense to the people sitting there is because of the board and its lack of understanding what's going on. And I think getting more people that understand and help given us a a a structure going forward um is, I mean, I'm looking at every opportunity to give us success here. So instead of trying to pick one of two good candidates, figure out a way to pick them both.
I like that too, I I think that I would add to that if I care if you're finished, um that that both these candidates bring two very good things to the table that could have real benefit, yeah.
So what I see happening is we, we don't have to redo the whole bylaws. You you prefer to do that, you know, you prefer to go through and only once vote on changing the bylaws. But I mean, we could simply by next month, change the bylaws to have seven people on the board to start. Because we wanted to do that for a long time because what we're covering, we're we're handling a lot of money and it
Yep.
This is really scary, there's times my stomach is, I I feel it's over my head. I mean, there's been times I've just like felt like that cat that's hanging on to the tree just. And so I do think having seven people on the board would be very, very beneficial and and helpful. And I also think, okay, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, I also think not now because we're in such financial straits, but this board takes so much time compared to any other board that I'm on that I could see sometimes a stipend. But right now, we don't have the finances to do that, but I do think it's something that we should consider in the future and and you quest, you know, even get, anyway. I would, I I like that idea of instead of, you know, because they're both very good and they bring different aspects um to what we've talked about for two years, just speed it up because it's always gets put on the back burner because you have the crises that are happening right now that you have to deal with that going and redoing the bylaws just keeps, it's been thrown that, thrown in the backseat now for, so maybe that's how we should look at it, is piecemealing it, let's, let's look at.
I can add it to my list for the September, where are you getting, excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead. And and I want to just interject that I I think that's a good idea, I don't see anything wrong with that, I don't want another board that has seventeen people, can't possibly have seventeen people. Most of them are not active, but um there's a reason for that, I'm not sure if I know, but but back to the Castle Valley thing, I think it's really important that there be a representation from Castle Valley because when I've been involved in um like the cleanup in Castle Valley and just the other um in my latter years on this board, just being active it with the camp, the the city, the town there, I think I, this voice brings a lot in both directions that um certainly I have educated people in Castle Valley about things and when I'm there at the cleanup, honest to God, you know, they were gonna, what were they doing this year, they were gonna take something that is not allowed in um electronic waste, I can't even remember what, TVs and stuff, they were gonna, they didn't have, they didn't have guidance from the mayor, which they should have had, and they were, you know, I was the only one between them taking a bunch of stuff that wasn't allowed and so I don't know, I just feel like you know, Thompson Springs isn't represented and you know, we know that that's probably not going to happen, but I've been really thinking and trying to work towards um getting public citizens to 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 contribute to boards and commissions, that's what they're called, and I'm e- even involved, Toni Knudson or however it is, we're working with a woman down in Price who has, they they've done public workshops where they invite the public in that might want to learn more about all the different commissions and um boards and the commissions and the boards come, it's like a job fair. And if you have a board and you want to to come, people to to be on your board, then you would come to this public meeting where people would come to to get gather information about your board and to see if they're interested in that. And that is a thing that Toni was saying, she knows the re- the re- the um, the talent is out there, the people in in uh in the county and and city are willing to serve, but there's no concerted effort to try to bring those two entities together. And we're working on doing something like that this fall, having this meeting that would invite the public to come and see all the different um people that they could serve on, the boards they could serve on and learn about them. And so, you know, if that's something that we're going to change in our, in our bylaws, then I'm wasting my time. So I'd just kind of like to know how how we feel about that.
So go and keep interrupting you. Um, by going to seven, you know, one of the things that I've experienced in in this short time that I've been on this board is that with a Castle Valley representative, you know, a lot of what the really takes the time when coming doing the checks and stuff is is a more challenging uh responsibility for you being from Castle Valley and so, I mean, this is just spreading out the responsibility a little bit and making it so that you know, having somebody from Castle Valley uh is a little bit more uh is a little bit more, a a less like of a of a negative impact on the rest of the board, you know, where somebody can, you know, in the selling of that person to, you know, and it should be, I think, if it was somebody from the town council, that would be fabulous, um. But they can come in with the the understanding that, you know, they can show up to meetings on Zoom and that they can have a little bit less, you know, responsibility to come in and and check, so I mean, I think this this solves that that issue or addresses it at least.
Well, when I come in, any any chance I know about, you know, it's not a hardship because I come in once a week at least. And so I, you know, if I can coordinate with Lily, I come in and sign checks, so, you know, that's great.
Yeah.
For for, I think so, I think we should leave, we should make the new, the two new board members at large, just at large. And if we want to add, because we've discussed it, uh uh expanding, this might make it easier to uh to the areas that we serve, because we serve North San Juan.
Oh, I would love to see.
So that would also just open up a lot more people who want, it it would open up, it would enlarge our pool.
And is there any challenges with that in our bylaws, a Grand County resident or?
We'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to work on that.
We'd put, we'd put verbiage into some of our creation documents that it's Grand County and surrounding areas.
Great.
What we do in the county is say the uh zip code, people living in this zip code. Isn't that?
If we expanded it and we had these two folks join, we'd still be down, we'd be down one and trying to get another person and that won't be an issue that takes a while to do, to fill.
Yeah, we'd just start advertising.
But we operate, we can operate with six, so it's fine, yeah, right.
The only challenge would be if there was a split vote. Which I don't think I've ever seen that happen.
We almost always agree, I always sometimes, I always sometimes just like vote the opposite for fun. So let's uh, let's, let's keep.
Who do you want to start first, though, I guess?
Just add the five people, I mean, let's change it from five to seven.
But if we wanted to add a member now and they need to go to the county commission to vote on, did you want to select one now or do you want to wait until? If we're waiting until September to update the bylaws, it's been waiting till the next commission meeting so they wouldn't be starting until October. Do you want to get one on now?
Shouldn't we get somebody on now?
Yeah, let's get somebody on now.
With the understanding of what.
And then just tell, we could, we could, we could do a straw, we could put a name in a hat, put two names in a hat and pull them out, we wanted to do that, or uh just arbitrarily just decide, any, many, mining all. Offer, say we're, but we would, but let the other person know, we're changing the bylaws so we can get you on, because both kind of days were really good.
Yeah, let's just randomly pick one and have the other one just just hold off for a month.
I know, I mean, I'm the new guy here, but it seems like you guys have a lot going on with all your equipment and stuff and so I don't know if you'd want Ashley to start first because she's got so much more experience with that angle on it, or if any could be happening the next month.
There's, there there's, there's no- nothing that anyone's going to do from a board standpoint that they're going to come on, I mean, that that was my kind of thinking in trying to get, you know, maybe both of them because they both have unique aspects and that's what I like, I had, that's why I wanted to bring that if I'm, she had the, asked the right questions, obviously knew what she was doing and that's been a struggle, at least from my standpoint, I'm not the best communicator, but trying to speak to the board about some of these issues, you know, I get a lot of eyes rolling back in their head and they're like, oh, what the hell did he just say? So I think, I mean, I think that's, you know, so so point taken, I guess.
If I may interject, the current opening is filling out the remainder of the vacancies, so it would just be like a three year, three-month term and any new appointment would be four years, so do you want one for three years and one for, if that changes it?
Well, that helps too because it staggers.
Yeah.
We're not replacing two people.
Maybe even ask them, maybe somebody who's like.
We have to vote on it today if we want to get it at the next county commission.
But yeah, I mean, I'm, I think it's fine to draw an email of a hat if we don't want to choose one. And Maggie has got a strong preference.
You do have a hat on.
Oh, I do have a hat on.
Let's do that.
Thanks.
Okay, see, I can just do a random generator.
Oh, do that.
Way to bring us.
Do you have to put the phone in the hat or?
See what's faster.
Well, the hat's probably faster because I can pull up a generator.
I know, I was trying to do a lot.
Let's just do this so we can go on, we got.
Okay.
All right, and then we're gonna have the. Have the vice chair, whatever.
It sounds chair throws man.
Chair throws a man.
Make them up, make them up.
Yes, ready for this. Go look, wait.
Ashley.
Get one vote.
Okay, Ashley.
Yeah, I'm, I I will entertain a motion.
Thing said Ashley. You have a real thing that Ashley selected me?
So that's the one thing. So I would entertain a motion to send a favorable uh refer- referee's re- recommendation to.
Chair?
Hmm?
Can you motion as chair?
That's what I'm asking, we need somebody to make that motion. I'm asking somebody to make the motion to send Ashley's name as a, to Grand County Commission.
Uh, as the wearer of the hat, I wear a motion to send Ashley's name to the Grand Candy Fish. I would second that.
Discussion?
Glad we have two people.
Uh, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so how does that work within with the communication to um both of them, to?
Exactly what we did, that we wanted both of them and we couldn't make money, so we threw their names in a hat.
Do you want me to email them tomorrow or do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read that?
Okay, yeah, or, yeah. And just say we, it was two, we, and then Chris came up with a brilliant idea that we all jumped on and we'll have to change it on, change votes, change the bylaws in September and then in October we'll have to re- we'll have to legally reopen
Two.
For two, for, for two.
Yeah.
For two, so we we can start advertising for two, we should do that right now. Even though we don't have the bylaws changed.
Right, yeah, because there's, once you change it to seven, there's still be an open slot, so um maybe communicate that to both candidates that uh in addition to them being on the board, once it changes to seven, there's still an open slot also.
I I think it's a fantastic idea.
We're gonna have to get a bigger table.
The more chairs, chase.
They're around.
We'll figure it out, also, Machado, we should.
The more people we can add involved, the better.
We are to approve transfer station operation plans that you brought up earlier, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, just real quick, um I don't know if you guys have that, so the there was a lot, there's a lot going back and forth um that, so this is if anyone wants a copy, I can send it to him, uh so the the entire plan includes the appendix that that contains a lot of the old information, the the as-bills, the 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 studies, the water. Um, the part that I missed was the closure plan. So the part that the regulators didn't like was a closure plan and a financial assurance plan. So we kind of compromised and I was able to get, uh, so we're gonna, we included the closure plan, but we're gonna admit uh the financial assurance. I mean, that's, it's not a real big deal because if we go down, the city and county are still uh, you know, on hook with us.
Worked well.
Uh, but with the, with the way that this was, the acquisition went, it wasn't discussed with them, so they're they're technically not, and it would have been a huge financial burden because we would have had to come up with a or another restricted PTIF fund to close the transfer station. Uh, now, understand that this uh is just voting for us, the district, to send this in, it has not been approved or anything yet. So I just, I just wanted the board to approve it and I will fill out the proper forms and submit it to the UDEQ.
And then they'll decide if they.
But but I have, we have been, on another note, real quick, I have been working with them. But but I have, we have been, on another note, real quick, I have been working with them. Uh hand in hand, so that that's where they, I was getting some of their input. So I had the engineers on one hand and the the D U D E Q on the other hand, so I think we've got a pretty solid. Uh case here, so and uh just as a historical note, uh we haven't had an operations plan since nineteen ninety-eight.
Yes.
So we got caught.
Well, I bet, did they have to do that when it was a private?
Um there was, uh technically, they're they're supposed to, but I mean, the. That rural Utah, I mean, it was, it was really because we we kind of uh. Upgraded our presence on their radar.
Okay. Hey, I maintain a motion to send this to the. DEQ.
I second.
Uh you you're you're making the motion.
Oh, I.
I will entertain a motion.
Thanks, sorry. Do the the link go down. I uh. I'll make a motion to send the operations plan to Utah DEQ.
I second. Cool, so a motion by Mike, seconded by Diane. Oh, in favor? Okay, our final action item is, no, it's a discussion possible action item. Is city of Moab and uh Canyon on Solid Waste composting grant. Who's in charge of that?
I don't know much about it. I think Justin and Chris.
Uh actually, I pulled, I pulled Mike in it. There was a lot of back and forth and we needed somebody to make a decision.
Uh Christian. Uh Alexi from the city a- as well as some representation from um the county. I don't know what her position was, but she was involved. Basically, we we are asking for approval. To apply for a grant. For a pilot composting food operation.
Where at?
Um. Kind of to be decided, it would be, uh it's in your packet, the the uh. The enclosed vessel.
Oh, one that we looked at before. Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Um. There would be no, uh it's a matching grant, but our time and also, I I don't really follow this, but. The idea is they're planning ahead, the city is trying to get ahold of farmers that will. Pledge to buy the the product at the end. And then some of that revenue will actually be part of the matching grant. I've never heard of that before, but. There's only so many projects that generate funds that they can use at the end, so uh it's kind of an interesting setup. But I'll, it's a joint, uh we would be the official applicant. We went back and forth on this. The city wanted us to do it. And we wanted the city to do it, to to put their name on the dotted line. Uh it it got down to uh ownership of the vessel. Uh and if they owned it and we were operating it and it needed to be moved and. Uh it's cleaner for the future if we're the official uh applicant. But it is definitely a uh co-application with the city committing to help write the grant. Uh do a lot of the legwork and paperwork. We made it clear to them, we really didn't have. That's the the word, the the latest keyword bandwidth. We just don't have extra people to uh. Do this type of thing and keep it up. Um basically, it's it's just a grant proposal. Uh we have no uh. Physical, uh no, we have physical, we don't have any cash out.
So this is, you you want, what you're asking is that we go, we work with the city on this grant proposal.
We we have to have it in a week and a half.
They're gonna do it?
Uh yes, uh we're having a meeting with the the leasing of the of the vessel. Um Richard from the city, who does grant writing, I guess. Uh is heavily involved and and Alexi's involved. And we're just asking for approval to go ahead and apply for this. It is just a grant. We have no out of pocket expenses.
It's not a matching?
Uh there are some matching, but our time, the actual collection of the material. It would be basically, uh we're gonna find whether it's a school. Uh or a restaurant, we'll be decided, but up to five ninety-five gallon carts. Each week we would pick up and we would add it to the vessel. And then twenty-one days or, yeah, twenty-one days. They have two versions depending on how much ingredients you have and how much you rotate it and whatnot. But this would be everything, uh the electrical that we would need, the the water supply, um it's all. In one, it's kind of a unique thing, um. But like everything, it costs money, obviously. Um it's a three hundred thousand dollar grant and I think two hundred and thirty-one. It is for the capital expenses. Um so it does pay for the uh. Doesn't pay for the collection, but pays for the the capital. Um. I thought I heard somebody say something. Um we're just asking for approval to go ahead and apply for this.
Did you find that there were a lot of unanswered questions when you talked to them about this? Or was it acceptable to you, when you talked to them about this?
Um I personally got involved, I was there the initial meeting and then I I got involved at the end, um. It it's a grant. What are our odds of getting it? I I don't know, um.
Oh, a doubt.
I I've applied for a lot of grants over the years and very, well, I haven't written them myself, but been involved. Um. I. It it could work. Um they they're doing the legwork. And that's the big part of this, um the city i- is doing a lot of the legwork.
They've been working on it all summer.
Um yeah, and now we're, now we're, uh now we're at time to submit it.
But I guess I just feel.
How do we feel as the board? Is this something we want to move forward with? I know it's something the community has been asking for for a long, long time.
Absolutely, and what what are the negatives?
Well, the negatives are, do we have the money if we have to do the match or where the city buck, where the match? Or can we go to the county? I mean, do that, that's the only down that I see.
The match for the collections, you mean?
No, the match for the grant. He said that there is a match.
Uh they're allowing in kind, basically, so our time.
Oh, okay.
The the driver going out, picking this up. There there is no out of pocket uh in this case.
Create a new route? Like, will it create more pressure on?
Well, that is a a negative, um but we are talking just the pilot, so we are talking just five parts each week. Kind of uh like the wag bags.
And and they de- they determined that that's enough to feed this machine to make it work, I guess.
Yes, yes.
The recipe has been.
I say it's a good thing.
And.
It's scary, but I think it's a good thing.
That's a good way of describing it, yeah. Am I a hundred percent comfortable? Hmm, but uh if if we can pull this off, it 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 makes an incredible product.
And this, who owns the shipping container composter machine?
That's why if we were the, that's what uh Mike's asking is if you guys approve it and sign the papers, then. Solid Waste Special Service District One becomes the owner of the machine.
And then if it doesn't pan out, then we'd have to figure out what to do with it. I guess we could probably sell it or something.
Yes.
You guys, that wouldn't be, that's not, that's not like a liability owning this thing that we now don't use.
I wouldn't call it a liability, uh. Diverted convex.
And actually, and they're pushing some type of lease, so there might be a a doubt. Um I and and re- really how this evolved is. Um at any point, we can still say no, even after you guys sign it, we can still say no if we can't get the. The 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 figures to match, we can still say, say no. E- even after they approve it, it's my understanding until some of the funds start going. Through it. I mean, we wanna, we won't wanna back out at really at that point, I mean, it comes to our integrity.
Seems like a great idea. Do you guys have any, this isn't related to me saying yes or no, but do you have any sense for like, if it could go full steam with composting? How much that would reduce our sort of waste stream?
About thirty percent, thirty, thirty per, thirty percent, although, but but. Take take in mind that our conduct landfill is not hurting for airspace at the current state. Right now, this this may change uh once the rules catch up to, you have to realize that the rules in rural Utah. And Utah are together are behind, probably fifteen years behind. There may be someday where they come and make us throw. Uh engineered liners into our landfill. Now all of a sudden the harm.
It would reduce your methane a lot too.
Uh we do not have any methane.
Good waste create methane when you put them in soil in in landfills.
We should, I'd measure it every quarter.
Yes.
Parts per million now, I don't know, we probably generate even a thing, parts per billion.
You guys measure.
So I would entertain a motion that. For this proposal.
I make a motion that we um. Direct Mike to, direct Mike to partake in. The plan to um. To be to, to write a grant to get the this food composting.
Just apply for the grant.
I think we should directly get a grant. Oh, you're gonna put it in writing, okay, great.
Okay, uh Diane made a motion that we uh. Could be okay for Mike to work with the city on this grant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Diane, seconded by Mike. Discussion.
USU has one of these things. They've had it for many years.
Call for, call for vote?
Oh.
Okay, uh passes, uh. I, our next meeting is on Wednesday, the eighteenth. We have a closed session to discuss the evaluations, uh. What I'm going to do and my, I I'm going to adjourn this meeting. At uh the Solid Waste Special Service this week and the board will go into closed session.
Do we have to motion to go into closed session?
Yes.
I make a motion that we go into closed session?
To ta- to discuss character, professional competency or physical or mental health of an individual.
Motion by Diane. Do those things.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, so I, what I did. And I think every, I went and researched it, that's one.